Well, good evening and welcome to a joint meeting between the Redmond City Council and the Human Services Commission. We are tightly packed around the table as any joint meeting usually is. But let's begin by introducing ourselves and then saying what's your favorite music style? So we get to know each other a little better. If you don't have a style, David, you know, he'll tell us. But I'm John Marshone. I've lived in Redmond, oh, too many years. And classic rock, including The Beatles, is my favorite music. Jason?
Jason Dick. Been in Redmond, I guess, eight years now. And it's probably country if I'm going to choose a style. Sorry, John.
No offense.
I'm Carolyn Mansfield. I've lived in Redmond for about seven years now. And I have a four-year-old daughter, so I am actually not allowed to listen to anything other than the Frozen soundtrack.
I'm Hank Myers in the Redmond City Council. I've been here 38 years, and I guess it would be progressive jazz.
Callan Baker. I've lived in Redmond for six years. And if you count marching band as a genre, that's actually what I like to arrange on the side.
Brooke Buckingham. And I've lived in Redmond just outside of city limits for about five years. And I don't know what style, but U2 and, I don't know.
Thank you.
Steve Dashell. I've lived in Redmond for about eight years and with a son who's a classic bassist. I tend towards classical music, but I'm an eclectic listener.
I'm David Carson, Redmond City Council. And I've been in Redmond about 20, I guess it's 23, four years, something like that. And I guess I would go along with classic rock, but I also sometimes like to listen to some electronic, electronica, you know.
Hey, Valerie Bayes, Human Services Commission. I lived in Redmond now for about 19 years. It's kind of shocking to think about. And I would say probably alternative and old-school hip-hop.
And I'm John Stillen. And I think I'm getting close to pushing 23 years here now, so this will be the longest I've ever lived in one place. And I do know that bass player. And I do like classical music, but I would say, too, my interests in music are eclectic. So that's what's nice about the bass. You can play just about any kind of music you want.
Byron Schutz, Council. Twenty-year resident. Lean towards classic rock and folk-rock of perhaps the Canadian variety.
And I'm Wendy House. I've actually lived in Redmond probably for only seven or eight months, so much more new resident than some of the rest. And I love all sorts of music. And right now, I've probably been listening to a lot more Ella Fitzgerald and Louis Armstrong lately, so that's what I'm feeling at the moment.
Sounds good. So I'm Tom Flynn, Redmond City Council. I've lived in Redmond for 20-some-plus years. And I have a pretty eclectic mix, interest in mix of music. And let's see, saw Pink Martini in concert this summer, but I also like to tune into, like, our local radio station for lunch with Lead on Saturdays. Lead Zeppelin.
I'm Lynn Fleishman. I'm on the commission. I don't live in Redmond. I have worked in Redmond for 15 years, almost 16. And I like to pretend I'm still in my 20s and listen to pop.
So I'm Hank Margeson. Lived in Redmond 22, going on 23 years. I love all kinds of rock and roll, classic rock. But I will also tell you that if you love rock and roll, the Hall of Fame is currently taking votes for the nominees for induction into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And one of my all-time favorites, Stevie Ray Vaughan, has been nominated. So I would encourage you to vote for Stevie Ray.
I think campaigning on the city grounds is illegal.
Done it again.
Well, thank you for joining us. I know we meet at least once every two years. I'm part of the budget process, but we've had discussions also in between. And Jason, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. I think that we are going to start with Alaric doing a bit of a kind of background on some things. Is that right?
So the Parks and Human Services Committee members had asked the staff to do a very brief overview of some Redmond demographics and trends that we're seeing in human services. And I know that you had a joint commission meeting with, a joint council meeting with the city of Bellevue just a couple weeks ago and got a lot of that information. So I think most of this is not repetitive, but if it is, please excuse. So the first thing is around income and poverty. We know that we are a very wealthy community, but what's surprising to a lot of people is that there are about 1,300 households in the city of Redmond with incomes below $15,000. 6.6% of our families fall below the federal poverty level, which, if you don't know, is really, really low. It's really low. Self-sufficiency for a family of four in Redmond, you would need to make $40.46 an hour, or $85,000 a year, to support one adult and three children. So given this, it's not really surprising that our housing affordability is very, our housing unaffordability is very large. About 30% of households in Redmond pay over 30% of their income for rent and mortgage. You know that we are a diverse community. Did you know that we're more diverse than Seattle? On a diversity index, which is, measures the probability that any two people selected at random from the same place would be of a different race. We score at 47.4, and Seattle is 46.6. So just a little bit above. Right now, Redmond is about 32% non-white. If you look at the Lake Washington School District, which of course we know includes Kirkland, they are 38% non-white. So our kids are even more diverse than the rest of us. Linguistic diversity, you know this. The top five languages after English are Chinese, Spanish, Hindi, Russian, French, and then a whole bunch of other ones. But what some people are surprised to know is that of the people who speak Chinese in Redmond, 38% of them have limited English proficiency, which is higher than the Spanish-speaking folks. And 45% of the Russian speakers are limited English proficient, 52% of Japanese speakers, and 56% of Korean speakers. So that's kind of surprising to some people sometimes. In Lake Washington School District, there are 106 languages spoken. One in four children in the Lake Washington School District speaks something other than English. We are a young community and growing younger. One of the trends is that Redmond, we have the higher, out of Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond, we have the highest percentage of youth and the smallest percentage of seniors. And those numbers keep grow, the youth keep getting more and the seniors keep getting Another trend that we see in human services, the increased need for homelessness services. Over the last couple of years, we've seen an uptick in winter shelter usage. The top line is for men, the bottom line is for women. We've also seen an increasing demand for beds at the Landing Youth Shelter here in Ongoing needs for basic need services. Out of the 1,473 calls that King County 211 received last year, 36% were for assistance with basic needs, things like food, clothing, shelter, housing. And 20% of the calls involve some type of financial assistance for heat or light, rent or transportation. And in addition, the HopeLink Food Bank every year serves over 2,000 residents, 2,000 Redmond residents. And the last trend that we wanted to point out was in terms of our youth, oh, in terms of our youth, suicide and depression is very high. 25% of Eastside students reported having depressive feelings in the last community's count survey, and 15% reported having seriously considered suicide. Drinking and substance abuse is also a big issue. 30% of 12th graders said that they drank three or more times a week, which is considered heavy or problem drinking. And 41% of these seniors said that they had drunk in the past 30 days. So it's a lot, and it's often.
Okay. Thanks, Alaric. So I think what I'm going to do is kind of talk a little bit about our review process, and then I think we're having a group conversation after that. I just wanted to say that I've really appreciated working with this commission of people. They've been really great opinions, great ideas, and it's been a lot of work, but it's been a lot of fun. And I'm also excited to be here with the council, too. I think that we have a real great group of people that are really involved in local nonprofits, understand a lot of the human services issues that are happening in our community. I think there's a really high level of participation, high level of involvement from everybody around the table. And so that makes this a lot of fun for us. And I think that we've really done a good job prioritizing that personally, professionally, and as a city. So I wanted to acknowledge kind of everybody in different ways for that kind of piece of things. So what I was going to start with is just kind of a little bit about how we do the review process and then what some of our recommendations look like. And so the, just a little bit of a background, we used a very similar processes to last year. We use the ShareOne app that we, that is kind of a joint application between 15 different cities. It's an online portal that we use to download applications and look at applications and then submit our reviews. There was 71 applications that we received, which represented over 2.6 million in requests, which is almost $1 million more than we have in terms of funding to give to the nonprofits. And you can see Lynn's binders is an example of all of the paper and packets and different things that we were reading and looking through. We used a very similar process to what we had done the last time around with our funding cycle, and we talked about what worked and what didn't work as we reviewed applications and looked at applications. We kind of looked in four basic areas. We talked about need. We talked about outputs and outcomes, like number of residents served, number of counseling hours, those kind of things. We looked at that. We looked at budget capacity as well as accessibility. And those were kind of the four main areas that we looked at when we were reviewing applications. All of our, all of the commissioners looked through all, read all of the applications. Our newest commissioner, Wendy, joined us about halfway through, and she looked through applications and talked with us then as well. And then when we reviewed them, we reviewed them in five categories. So we used the food to eat and roof overhead, which is our first objective of the strategic plan. Supportive relationships within families, neighborhoods, and communities is the number two. Safe haven from all forms of domestic violence. Healthcare, to be as physically and mentally fit as possible. And then education and job skills to lead an independent life. So we'd use each one of those areas, and we'd talk through the applications that fit under that. Because we wanted to make sure that we were thinking strategically about each one of the areas of our strategic plan, looking at applications in light of that, thinking through what we set a strategic plan about, I guess, five years ago is when that happened. Some of the key, and so what we did is we took those five areas and then we rated them, and then we used those rating scores to kind of start the conversation. So score, applications that had a higher review, we discussed less because there's a higher agreement. Those that were less agreement, we talked through, you know, where we were each coming from. We have a pretty broad group of different kinds of experience, from being in the nonprofit sector, having worked within social services, a lot of different places. And so we tried to bring that expertise to bear as we were talking through different applications. Some of the key themes and summaries that we saw, we wanted to continue to support the broad continuum of need. We've, that's kind of been a lot of what we have done through the funding historically, is making sure that we're funding the broad continuum of need for the region. We wanted to respond to emerging community needs and changing demographics to the best extent possible. Wanted to acknowledge the increased costs of operating programs, delivering services as well as support programs that expand services addressing known needs that are within Redmond. Wanted to continue leveraging existing funding sources whenever we could to just increase the leverage and the amount of dollars that were available essentially, and to balance the need for crisis response and interventions with proven prevention strategies. So those were some of the kind of basic ideas that we were thinking through when we were rating applications and some of the ways that we kind of looked at things. The next piece I want to talk with you about is what our recommendations are. And I believe you have two different attachments. One of them is the rating tool that we use, and then the second one is the attachment that talks through what are, what we're recommending to the council. And on the attachment B, there's a change that we'll have to make. Do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, so we wanted to enter some revised materials into the record. It was brought to our attention that there's a typo on one of our award amounts. And on page two, Chinese Information and Service Center, which is under the Supportive Relationships category in your, in the original file. It was about $16,000 for the 2014 award, and it should have been $23,005. And then the, the recommendation is $23,456. So we acknowledge that this revises the bottom line, and we feel comfortable with making this, fixing this typo because we do have a cushion in our fund balance. So we want to apologize for that error, and we brought copies of the final revised attachment. So I'll hand those out.
Great. I was going to say this earlier. I just wanted to thank Brooke and Alaric and the staff for all of the work that they've done in helping keep track of what's happening, little details like that, that we don't know all of the ins and outs of what's, what's taking place, working through talking points, working through evening meetings and everything. So you guys have been incredible at walking through this, this process with us, helping the commission out. Truly, truly incredible. So I really appreciate that and wanted everybody to just hear the level of skill and experience that you guys bring and how fun it's been to work with you guys. So then, oh.
Mr. Stillen.
So I had one question before you get into it.
Sure.
Your five buckets, what, how did you reach your decision about your allocations?
So I'm trying to think, there's a couple ways that we could answer that. So the, when we look at how we funded the five buckets the last cycle, and we compare them to how we funded the buckets, or were recommending funding the buckets this time, there's really nominal difference between the two. And so I would say the largest piece is really meeting basic needs. And then we want, what we didn't want to do is make it proportional funding for each bucket, because that's not the way that we received applications and the way that we've seen funding historically. But it's very close to the way we've done it before. And I would say that the largest bucket usually ends up being the food to eat and roof overhead. And then from there, it's relatively evenly distributed. Is that mostly accurate? Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to kind of cover some high-level, what's in this attachment B document and kind of what we were recommending. And then I'd love to get some more questions and feedback from you guys. The, what we, what we're proposing doesn't have any, any application that we funded last cycle. We didn't defund any application, so there's not, there's not anything missing that you would, would have seen last time. There are a few additional opportunities that we've included on here. So basically, what we looked at doing is applying a 2% COLA to all existing programming, and we didn't cut existing programming from the last time. There's some, some school-age youth and proven prevention strategies that we have recommended as a new project opportunity. There's support programs that are culturally relevant and affect service, all members of our community, which is some of our domestic violence work with Consejo. You'll see that in here as well. And then support programs that respond to new and emerging needs in our community. HopeLink's Emergency Food, Friends of the Youth, the Landing Shelter, Homeless Youth, and then Eastside Legal Assistance Program and King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. So those are some of the kind of new areas that we did. It was basically a 2% COLA on existing programs and then some strategic intentional investments in youth, in culturally relevant programming, and in some specific emerging needs that we saw. The way that this is organized, you can see the agency, the program, the description about the program, the amount that they've requested, and then the 2014 amount awarded or currently funded, and what we've recommended. So that's the way this attachment B sheet is kind of laid out. The total recommendation includes approximately $800,000 a year available in general funds, and then $25,000 from the CDBG dollars. What is CDBG?
Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, thanks. I'm so used to using acronyms that I'll forget what the actual acronym is. I should have turned off my mic for that one. Using the budgeting by priorities, we, we looked at if we were to have a 5% reduction in funds, what we would do is we wouldn't do a cost of living increase, so they'd just be funded at what they were funded last year. That would be the main way that we'd make the 5% work. And then we also looked at if we were to do an increase by 5% at some strategic investments in employment services, increased access to services, mental health and substance abuse services, and then school-aged youth. One thing I wanted to mention that as a part of that, when you look at the way that our funding has kind of done, and you look at year to year, we really are seeing kind of incremental growth. So we're growing by a 2% COLA as our allocation grows. And when you look at the gap between the amount that was requested and the amount that we've historically funded, we're looking at a $1 million gap. And so what we've kind of seen oftentimes is that we're really kind of just keeping pace as opposed to making a strategic kind of turn to what's happening around human services. And so one thing that we wanted to kind of think about is as we're looking at, you know, the 2% COLA is substantially lower than what the requested funds were. And we took a very careful look to see are there specific projects that we'd recommend a beyond COLA funding. That was something that we took a very detailed look at. But there's also a very limited amount of new opportunities when we look at the existing funding that we have right now. So there's not a lot of new projects. There's not a lot of new strategic things that we're able to do. And so we really wanted to recommend that the council start to think through what would some additional funding opportunities for human services look like, whether it's something creative like human services levy, whether there's other kinds of things that we can think about so that we can do more than just kind of sustaining the increased need, but we can take a really proactive and strategic look at how can we make a really big impact in, in human services work around the areas that we're working in. So that was one kind of piece. When we think about increased funding opportunity, there's a lot more that we could have done. And I think that that would look more than 5% if we were really to take a serious look at what, you know, what would it mean to fund human services at a closer level to what the need looks like? So that's my, my soapbox that I'm stepping off of, but.
While you're up there, if the city or the county were to ask the voters for additional funds for human services, what would be the general case that this commission would make?
Sure. So, you know, I'd love, I'd love other people's answer to this, too. But one of the, when we looked at kind of what some increased opportunities, looking at employment services, increased, increased access, mental health, and services to school-age youth, I would say that's the kind of generic look at. What I'd want to do is talk about what is really behind those numbers? What does it mean to have increased employment services? What's the repercussions for some of those things? They're not necessarily always as large as the public would want to see, but I think talking through what specific increases could mean and what they could look like, and what does it mean to really invest in the existing infrastructure for nonprofits? I find a lot of nonprofits are really kind of living month to month or week to week. And if there was some strategic things we could do around infrastructure to make sure that we were secured as Redmond continues to grow, I think there's a lot of creative intentional things that we could do. Other additions to that?
Well, King County's done some really innovative work on looking at the social determinants of healthcare. Healthcare is driving costs across the board in terms of our quality of life. And what, what they've discovered is in countries that have good healthcare outcomes, they also have significant investments in human services that prevent a lot of the causes of poor health. And, you know, I think that's a paradigm shift that we need to take in this country, and King County could certainly lead the way. But, but it's, it's true across the board. The same paradigm shift needs to occur in education. It's not, it's not that kids are dumber than they used to be. It's because they don't have the resources they need to be successful in, in the social context. And it's true in criminal justice. If you make those investments early, you can prevent costs down the, down the line. So in each case, we're looking at, you know, a quality investment early in life, with good human services, you'll see significant savings later on.
Yeah, if I had to package that up, I would say that it's, it's not your father's charity endeavor. It truly has made the shift to an evidence-based intervention. I've just been dazzled with the impact that our service agency partners have been able to demonstrate. And I really have gotten a sense of pent-up demand for funding to unlock some of the innovation potential that they have. They have so much skill, and they have so much will to make a significant impact. What's holding them back is the funding. And I feel like for Redmond in particular, as we think about responding to changing demographics, we're going to need to change the service delivery model in pretty significant ways. And I just want to make sure that we are well-positioned to do that.
Thank you. Good answers. Thank you.
Are there other questions or?
Oh, Mr. Myers, sorry.
Yes, I was looking at the demographic information with some real interest because having lived here for 38 years in Redmond, for a while, the average age was growing. And then something happened around 1983 that we began seeing the average age begin to decline. But then around 2005, my recollection is we began to see the average age begin to creep up a little bit. And, and I'm trying to understand if there's, there's an actual reversal, looking at the difference between the young people and the old people.
I didn't know the answer. Well, we actually got lower between 2000 and 2010. The US Census had us at 36-point-something. And 2010, we were 34-point-something. So we should all feel two years younger.
Sort of like daylight savings time, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the issue, though, as I was watching it from year to year, I think that's absolutely true, but I think that there was a
Could have been.
A little bit of a shift after the turn of the century, where people who had come to work here in their 20s and 30s were still working here. And I'm wondering if, in fact, those people who came to work here in their 20s and 30s got married and are now having kids. And so we're seeing again a reversal. But I'm wondering if that creates, you know, a proportional shift, that now we're seeing more youth-related problems and fewer older, you know, senior-related problems. And that's why I, I have a couple of questions about innovative solutions. When I chaired the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, one of the things we did in the last year was we had looked at a number of, of people we had been funding over the years. They had been there for years and years and years doing the same thing. And we said, well, maybe we'll give them a little bit less, and we'll try to provide some seed money for some new ideas that were generating tourism. I know you do have some new agencies, but I'm curious to know how you would propose to improve innovation. We had talked about, a year or two ago, about having move-the-needle-type projects. And the other issue is if you were to get an additional $50,000 in funding, how would you spend that to create innovative or, or better service models?
Anyone want to take a swing at that one? For all of you?
Sure, I can talk a little bit about innovation, and then maybe, Jason, you can talk a little bit about an additional $50,000.
Sure.
You know, in terms of spurring, spurring innovation from our agency partners, I think what's not reflected in what looks like flat plus funding is the innovation that they've made to respond to changing conditions in East King County, as well as a changing federal, state, and county funding landscape. And so there are huge changes afoot in their business models that they have had to respond to on the fly. Just to give you one example, we've seen significant changes in how homelessness is addressed with a shift from, I don't know what the old model was called, but the new one is called Housing First, where they discovered through research and evidence that this is the more effective, cost-effective way to rehome people quickly and provide stability in their lives so that they can begin to address some of their other social needs. When you look at the service units that we are tracking as part of our funding, the output for the city hasn't changed. We're still trying to supply bed nights, and that just does not transmit the tremendous innovation that's happened around that model in order to have the final outcome for the client be much, much, much better. I think that what is missing here are the specific four areas that we know we have under-invested in due to making some painful trade-offs after a lot of discussion. And we know that we are overall missing a shift to upstream or preventative services. And that was how we arrived at this list, is that we knew that these were things that would be the most highly-leveraged investments. It just, when we applied the ratings tool, we were not able to justify a trade-off away from our current portfolio. We felt that we had to continue to provide essential services, emergency services, make the invest, existing investments that we have in preventative services, and this is the piece that's missing. I'll let Jason say a little bit more about that.
Sure. So when she's saying this, what she's talking about is employment services, increased access, mental health and substance abuse, and services for your school-age youth. So in terms of the $50,000, I'm going to give you kind of two-ish answers. One answer would be there are some very specific proposals One answer would be there are some very specific proposals behind those four indicators that we just talked about that I think actually equal around 87 if we were to fully fund the four things we talked about. But we would really want to talk about what is that amount? And we prioritize it based on conversations we've had under those four kind of areas. But some of what I'm also trying to kind of raise as a question is, we would love to have $50,000 to do more, but I think the problem is actually much larger than $50,000. And I would love to be able to put minds together around what could some creative solutions look like? So that it wasn't just a what can we do right now for an increase, but what can we do to move the needle on change?
And the moving the needle, and maybe Brooke can address this, because then moving the needle was also a phrase that was used to describe innovative new projects that would create a bigger return on investment. Has anything been done with that?
So one of the key lessons learned, and if you recall, we called it the Deep Impact Project, where we put out an RFP and said, tell us what you could do for $100,000 in Redmond. And a couple of key things is that agencies put together some pretty creative proposals, but there is an issue of sustainability. So if we funded that proposal for $100,000, how could they sustain the project going forward? And the other piece was that really leveraging was key. So Redmond could kick in dollars, but could we find an FTE without Bellevue and Kirkland? And really, there are no borders. And I think that came up in your meeting with the Bellevue City Council is that we wanted to demonstrate how it is going to impact clients in Redmond. But it really is a subregional piece. So we want to be innovative, but there are some, we are within a system. And I think that was some of the challenges. And I don't know if anybody else had some other?
I think Lynn wanted to talk.
I was just going to say, as we went through that process, and it was kind of frustrating to get to the end and realize we had done all this work, but $100,000 wasn't going to do what we wanted to do. It wasn't going to move the needle. We needed more, it had to be bigger. It had to be deeper. And $100,000 just can't do that. And I know it was frustrating for the agencies that put in all the work for those, that RFP and for us, because we were so excited to move forward on that and then realized that we couldn't for that limited amount of money.
You know, we had a similar process in Seattle. I'm the co-chair of the Seattle Human Services Coalition, and we just went through a city budget process where we were asked to move the needle. And we asked our human services community, what would it take to move the needle on, in the area that you're working in? And we brought back a package that was about $60 million in Seattle. And Seattle's a big city, but, but, but that's, you know, the city council in Seattle is saying that's just not realistic. And so for this year, we're saying, well, you can make progress on moving the needle by funding an incremental portion of that. But the point is, is that if you truly want to see a change, you're going to have to make an investment commensurate with the problem. And if you're talking about homelessness, if you're talking about hunger, if you're talking about school success, you have to make a significant investment to see significant results.
Anyone else? John?
So there were some comments made here. So are we talking regionally or within the city when we talk about these amounts? Because it seems to me that these problems know no borders. So just like we solve, well, we try to solve housing problems with Arch on the east side, do we have a similar type discussion going on? I guess with the, what is it, the east side human services forum?
Forum.
You know, do we have someplace where we're pooling and saying, the magnitude in Redmond's this amount, but we really need to raise this throughout the east side? So where would we put the money? Here or spread it out?
I think that, I would say that we probably have to do something beyond just Redmond. But, and I wouldn't say that what I'm talking about right now is a plan that we've articulated and have lined by light, and this is what we would do. But we more wanted to start, we feel, we feel like to get there, we have to start having the conversation. And I think this in many ways is the right group to have the conversation because of the high level of understanding. And if that was something that we wanted to do, there's a lot of things that we'd love to investigate and think through. And there's a lot of collaboration that I think local cities would have in that. If we were to say, the Redmond City Council is behind this kind of concept that we're starting to build, this is what it could look like, this is what we're presenting, will you partner with us in that? And I think we could see some pretty substantial regional change through that. I'm more starting the conversation and raising the question. Tom?
I guess one of the questions I have is about the funding structure that we have in place today. And it's a per capita basis, right, for the city of Redmond? And I guess my question, is that the right model? I mean, is it, is that, because I look at, say, 2% COLA growth is not enough to keep up with what's probably 3% to 5% growth, right? That's in, built into just the, what we're seeing inflationary pressures from healthcare costs and everything else. And if we're, if we're, if the per capita growth is not keeping up with the growth in the services, maybe a human services levy is the right thing, but is that, is it the right funding model? What would be a different funding model that might be more effective in terms of keeping up with, you know, the ongoing challenges that we're seeing in growth and need?
That's a good question. You know, part of, when you look around King County, cities, different cities have different levels of funding for human services. Seattle has about 6% of their general fund devoted to human services, community health and human services. I think Redmond's a little less than 1%. There are other suburban cities that are far less than that. They simply don't have the, the, the infrastructure to support a human services department. So some don't provide any funding at all for human services needs in their community. But the reality is, is that many of these decisions are being forced down to the city level. And it seems to me that the city has to step up to make those commitments and address those issues. So I, you know, I think getting to your question, John, whether it's a local or a regional question, I think it's both. There has to be both a local and a regional response and some coordination or collaboration between different, different entities to make sure that we have a system that works rather than a fractured system that we more or less have right now.
Hank?
Thank you. Let's me understand this. So the funding is a per capita. And as our per capita, as our capita grows, right? That increases the pie as well as the 2% inflationary growth. So there is two aspects growing in this fund. Three.
There's three. You also want to account for the increased cost to serve that's driven by the increased complexity of the client base. So there's a world of difference between trying to serve somebody who needs your help that you can communicate with and trying to serve somebody who needs your help where you need it.
Oh yeah, I wasn't even getting to the expenses yet. Yeah, I was just talking about increased sources of revenue.
Point of order, sir. I think the 2% inflation they talked is what they gave to the agencies. We didn't give that to their pot.
Gotcha.
So our population grows at about 1% a year, and so they probably got a two, 1% to 2% increase in their pot.
Thank you for clarifying.
Excuse me.
I was confused by that.
Byron?
Thank you. And want to thank each of the commissioners for your work throughout all the year and years that you have served on the commission. That brings you to the point tonight and this month where you're presenting the culmination of, part of the work that you do in the process of going through these grants. And we appreciate how much work and time it takes to have a very robust, rigorous process that, that documents and really very rationally and logically walks through how you analyze and evaluate the grants to be able to come and present these funds to our community and services. And also appreciate how the soft side of that is how challenging it is to make some very difficult choices within that. As you said, almost twice as much need as there is funding available. So I want to thank you for all the work to do that. I wanted, and perhaps you answered this in some ways earlier, talking and answering the question about what would you do with additional funding in the two different ways it was presented? But looking at, you know, your 71 grants that you received, of which about 21 were not able to be funded, went unfunded, about 21% of those were fully funded. And, you know, the other 30 or so grants, most of those received less than 90% of what was requested. Looking at those 21 that went totally unfunded, given your five categories and five guiding principles, can you draw any themes or common characteristics of those 21 grants that went unfunded and why? What, kind of flip the context around of giving the reason for why you funded the others? What was it, were there themes in these 21 that simply didn't make them viable?
I would say there's, there's a lot of different reasons and a lot of different pieces. Some of it was, we didn't feel like they're the right strategic investments for us. And some of it was, we didn't have the funds to make strategic new priorities. And so I would say some of the four areas that we talked about in terms of employment services and those other kind of pieces are part of those 21. And then some of those 21 are proposals that we, we didn't feel like it was the right time to engage or invest in at this, at this time. Does that answer a little bit?
Well, as I was wondering whether there's also a change in dynamics or change in need, you know, as you, as you mentioned, you're looking at the evolving needs of the community. Were some of those grants, you know, if we moved past that need or, that's not a good way to phrase it, because obviously there, there are things that require funding and there's, there's good programs addressing them. I just wondered if there's other common themes that tied those all together rather than, but you answered my question. But if there's any, anything additional that other members would like to add, I'm glad to hear the input.
I don't know that I'd say that there's need that we've moved past necessarily. I'd say there may have been a couple that we just didn't feel like there was a solid enough case for engaging the Redmond community. And so we didn't feel like it was the right time to do that investment or that we felt like it was a too high of cost when you compared it against a different need that we were looking at. And so, I mean, I would have said that any proposal we looked at, we didn't say there is true need here. But I think there were some that we said, we've got to put this up against this and make a decision about where the money lands. Is there anything you guys would add to that?
No, I think that's about it.
Hank?
Thanks.
So, thank you for clarifying my question earlier. Thank you for this. So, you know, if you had an inexhaustible source of revenue, if revenue was not the issue and you could solve these problems, let's say you found a magic printing press in the basement somewhere. What I would suggest you'd want to do is demonstrate the need or the outcome, right? So you know, we have a need, here's the outcome we want to get to, and here's the cost. Currently, under this current process, you, you know about how much money you're going to have to allocate, plus or minus 1% or 2%, pretty much year in, year out. But if you strip that away and just said, okay, if we really want to move the needle, whatever you want to call it, affect change, and we can partner with our other east side friends in other communities, Bellevue, Kirkland, Mamish, whatever, this is what it would take, and this is the outcome that we would get, and this is the cost, right? And then come back and say, okay, you guys want to move the needle? This is what it's going to cost you in, in real terms, real dollars. And so that's probably, I'm just sort of turning it around the question the other way and pushing it back toward you. But also at the same time, keep in mind that at King County, they, they fund their human services with a levy, and that's all they fund. They fund none of their human services out of their general fund anymore. Because as, when push came to shove, what was the first thing to go? Human services. And that got pushed down to our level at this point in time. So we're sort of the last resort in that sense for human services for local needs. And thank goodness that you're combining with other communities to help fund some of these services that are, that are making the difference in a lot of people's lives. So I don't know, need an answer tonight, but I would just throw that, throw that idea out to you all.
I think we'd love to, to do more thinking in that. But I also want to, would think that some of it is going to be incremental steps in that I would love to be able to say, if we put this amount here, we did this thing, we would have these outcomes. And it's, human services just don't always work like that. And so I think there's a little bit of, we definitely would want to put more planning into it and have some strategic conversations, but I don't think we'll ever arrive at anything that clean.
And it's, it's not like it's, you know, in the business world, you can say, I'm going to put this much money into this whatever investment.
In marketing.
And I'm going to, I'm going to get something out of it. You know, when we put money into the landing, wonderful opportunity, what did we end up with? A lot of folks having a shelter, but we also ended up a lot of folks sleeping in front of the library. And so there's obviously more need out there than we were able to, to fund. And so that, there's that challenge as well. It keeps growing.
Tom?
I think it's actually a virtual bag of Bitcoins that we would need to find, right? Just, just to get current day. But I think similar to Mr. Margison's comments and Mr. Schutz, if, if we were to say, look at the, the gap between what we were requested to fund and what we did actually fund, I think the, the question would be if we did have that funding available, the requests, those wouldn't necessarily be the, the direction those dollars would go, right? I mean, you guys would probably then need to sit down and really think through where should the dollars go? Not necessarily this agency because they requested it and we have money, right? We would need to sit down and say, gosh, let's, maybe we need to increase the funding to a different agency because it really meets our objectives better. So that's, I think that would be, if there was, say, a human services levy, that would be more than, I think, the approach of looking at that.
What I'd add to, just to follow up on earlier, if we were to get the 50 or 87 or whatever that number was, we do have specific things we'd want to do right now. But if we were to talk about something that was that much larger, there's definitely more thinking that needs to come into it.
David?
So I had two questions. One is about the, excuse me, the 2014 awarded, like, do we have, I mean, it was conspicuous by its absence, the, at the bottom of the, of the report, how much we actually awarded for 2014? Because it's really easy to do calculations based on, because we've been talking about 2%, but the way I calculate it, it looks more like 6% overall.
I actually wanted to clarify, make a clarifying point, that the human services fund is based on both the per capita with the built-in COLA. So that is built into, and that's our projected amount. It's the 820, it's assuming the population growth as well as a COLA. So you are correct.
So 831?
What was that?
831.
It's the recommended amount. I, right, excuse me.
But, but for, but for 2014, do we have an, I mean, I added them up, but.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I added them up just to understand what we're really looking at year over year. And it's, it's, it looks like it's more like a 6% overall increase. So the 2% plus the per capita is adding up to.
But some of, we did have some new programs in there, so they would have zero in the 2014?
Oh, I understand. I mean.
Right, so that's.
Right. I mean, that's where the, I mean, it.
And 2 is.
Yeah, it's, it's about 50,000 more than it was last year. So I just wanted, because on our, on our report, it doesn't really talk about what we, what we did last year. So I just wanted to understand that that's what we're talking about. And then I, so Mr. Margison briefly touched on it about the landing. What, in your kind of deliberations, did you talk about the, the issues surrounding the landing and, and, you know, how intense was the discussion about that? And so maybe you can give us a sense of what that was like?
Sure.
Did, did you go into?
Anyone else want to answer that or do you want me to answer that? Valerie, you're smiling. I think you're itching to respond.
I'm just smiling because I think that the landing has been a topic of conversation a handful of meetings since it, since we have been funding them and since the, it has been brought to our attention. I think at the end of the day, what it came down to is we can continue putting beds in the landing, but we don't know how far that problem reaches out. And, and, and to your point, there are no borders. So when we did add the beds, there were, you know, there were more folks that came out of the woods and there were more folks that were in front of the library. And so I think it really came down to making sure that we were providing them what they needed, because I think that they provided an essential service to the city, but we don't really know what those limits are.
And when, just to respond a little bit more, when we looked at funding beyond COLA, the landing was one, and that specific project was one that we said, yes, we need to fund this at closer to full. And their proposal actually asked for even increased expansion beyond what we did this last year.
All right, we did, sorry, and we did do some emergency funding as well, augmenting. Well, I guess what I was kind of getting at was, you know, is, is this the right investment? Or are we creating a magnet for people to come to Redmond to sleep? And I don't know the answer to it. I just, I, it seems like we've kind of opened up a, a box that is going to be hard to close. So that's what I was kind of getting at.
Does anybody want to speak to that?
Well, I think, I think what it does do is illustrate very effectively, and unfortunately, the, the, the dearth of available shelter space for young people. I think the landing represents the only. I think the Landing represents the only, isn't it, the only youth shelter on the East Side? So of course it's going to be a magnet for youth, because it's the only one. And I think if anything, it indicates that we need to put even more resources into that particular effort. And, you know, whether it's Redmond's role to step up to that, I think is a question you all need to consider, but certainly somebody needed to, and I'm proud of the fact that Redmond did.
John?
Yeah, I was going to say, on that particular thing, I had some communications with sort of the development manager over at the Landing, and I believe the number he quoted to me was $83,000 was needed to just keep the beds that were there. So to me, we're a little short on helping them out here by a factor of $60,000. But that really gets to the regional issue. I agree, it's not big enough. What you see in front of the library is the fact that there are people that need help, and there just isn't enough money. And I too would say, when we funded that, the expansion of Landing, or however it came to being, I think that's where I would have liked to look more at that regional picture to say, okay, just, I think just like when the men's shelter goes in, where are we going to put the shelter? How are we going to cooperate to do this? I don't know if we went through that exercise. I think it was just such an urgent need, we just jumped in. Now that we've jumped in, we're in it, and I think we have to look at that. And that's where we have to go to Kirkland and Bellevue and say, okay, so if we're going to house homeless youth, how are we going to do with this? And there may be a part too, you know, when you say, it all gets pushed down to us, everything seems to be getting pushed down the city, there's a part of me that just wants to say, no, you know, we're not going to do it. So we're going to push it back your way a little bit, because I just don't see these as city issues unless somebody gives us the authorization to go out and start collecting regionally. So there's a part, if you accept it, it becomes your problem. You've just let somebody dump it in our lap because they can't reach consensus on it. So there's, I wish there was a way to just push back without hurting people in that battle, but that's kind of what we're up against. So as far as I can tell, we could send $60,000 more just to fund what's going on.
Byron?
Well, to that note on the regional issue, I mean, my understanding would be, some of our neighboring cities who host the men's winter shelter and the women's shelter over in Bellevue also help fund our shelter as we do theirs through their grant process. So their commissions are going through a similar process as ours are to help fund regional solutions to our regional problems. And to Mr. Stillen's point, being able to form these partnerships and regional relationships that help fund in the short term, whether the short term is five years or 10 years or 20 years, does help begin to build coalitions that helps us push that back up, showing that we have partnerships and regional solutions to regional problems that require far more regional leadership. So hopefully, we're setting a good example. And again, I appreciate and thank you for all your work you do through the year to help build those relationships.
Jason, you have any closing comments?
Yeah, I just want to kind of re-say what I did at the beginning. I really do appreciate your minds and your commitment to what we're doing. I'm excited about the opportunities that we have and the difference that we can make. And so thank you for taking time with us today and, you know, thinking critically about these things and prioritizing them.
Well, I wanted to thank you for your commitment, but also your diligence. You're really trying to make sure that Redmond's making its investments smartly. We've gone into more detail than I think any commission usually goes into. And the council and I really appreciate the work that you do. And so when we throw back questions to you, it's because we value your opinion, we value your perspective, and these are thorny issues or tangled issues, and they're difficult to sort out. John?
And I just want to say, because I think this is the first time we've all gotten together since the food drive. I want to thank you all. I don't know if you saw the numbers, if it got reported back to you, but we collected even more this year. And I know the people on the council are there. You know, it's a great day to get together with you guys, and really, it's another opportunity to catch up while we're doing a good thing. And I hope we'll see you again next year for, I think it's become an annual tradition, and it's really great to get together and work with you guys. So I just want to say another thank you for coming out and supporting that.
Well, on that note, thank you very much.